Welcome to the January eighth Select Board Meeting. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance, and I would ask that we ask to please remain standing for a moment of silence for our friend L. Fay tonight after the pledge.
The United States of America, as we are a法治, a democracy, a fair, just world.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All righty. Item one. Item one, first daughter of a business of the new year. Introductions. We have two new police officers who graduated recently. Chiefs? Chiefs?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm before you this evening for the purposes of introducing our two newest officers to the town via the Select Board. The officers before you tonight are Officer Cody Davison and Officer Byron Lara. You'll remember that the town administrator had actually appointed both of these gentlemen back in June of 2023. They were appointed without any ceremony at that time in order to get them into the academy, which subsequently started in July of 23. Both of these officers tested for the department during an exam process that began on October fifteenth of 2022. We had well over a hundred candidates apply, and we processed in earnest at least thirty of those candidates, taking only three for full-time employment. The first officer from this batch was Brett N. Canarcio, who was appointed by this board on February thirteenth of 2023. We were able to take him on quickly because he was already academy-trained, whereas these officers needed to complete the basic recruit academy. So on July seventeenth, 2023, they began the fourth ROC Lynnfield Police Academy. From day one, I can tell you that both of these officers excelled. They both immediately showed leadership skills beyond the norm of the rest of the class. I started to get high praise about both of these officers from academy staff, including two of our own Burlington officers that serve as staff instructors or DI's, as well as the four to five Burlington officers that serve as curriculum instructors, one of them being Select Board Member Jim Tigges. Each of these men continued to maintain high standards of excellence as they continued their six-month training and consistently displayed an excellent work ethic throughout the six-month training academy. On day one, there were seventy-six recruits, and sixty-nine ultimately graduated this past Thursday. I'm very happy and proud to report to you that Officer Davison finished as the third highest recruit, missing the number-one spot academically by only two points. He is also the recipient of one of the two 100% effort, leadership, and character awards that were given out by the academy staff. Throughout the academy, I was updated every two to three weeks, and Officer Davison was a constant positive for the academy staff. For much of the academy, he was expected to finish as a top recruit overall, and he did not disappoint. I'm sure for his purposes, missing the top spot was disappointing, but for me and the rest of the staff, his effort and determination gave us all the trust, or give us all the trust, that he will continue to perform at very highest levels. Officer Lara performed very well throughout the academy as well, and drew tons of praise from the academy staff and our own personnel for his ethics and drive throughout the academy. One comment made directly to me summed him up like this, and this is a quote: "Every instructor and staff member loved him. He was always focused, intense, in great shape, and helped mentor other classmates, especially during applied patrol procedures," which is the practical aspect of the academy. As a matter of fact, both of these officers were used by academy staff to mentor their classmates that were having issues with the practical exercises during applied patrol procedures, which is a true expression of the confidence in their individual and collective abilities. The officers began their full-time law enforcement careers this morning at 8:00 a.m. with orientation and firearms training this afternoon, and they will continue this week with orientation, computer training, and some other sessions prior to beginning their twelve-week field training programs. I expect both officers will continue to maintain the highest quality of ethics and professionalism, along with determination and the grit that's going to be necessary to be successful through field training, with the end goal of being assigned as a solo patrol unit within the Operations Bureau sometime in April. Throughout the academy and field training, these officers have been inundated and will continue to be with the knowledge, skills, and abilities necessary to be successful. But as they are learning already, the early stages are like drinking water from a firehose. Yet each one of them has started off on such a positive note, there's no doubt we chose correctly to fill these positions, and I'm very happy to have them on board and introduce them to you. Gentlemen, Officer Cody Davison and Officer Byron Lara.
Good luck out there.
Good luck.
Good luck. Good luck out there. Nice to meet you.
Thanks again.
They certainly can do one with the board.
Yeah, sure. Why not? Yeah.
Boys, go right back. Picture taken. Yeah.
We move back a little bit. I see. Oh, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
What?
Just a little bit.
It's just right. Okay.
Just push it.
Traveling less.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, guys. Very welcome.
Thank you, Chief.
Jobless. Bye now. Good night.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. You know, Paul, these stories from the chief about these guys from Burlington out at the academy and the high marks they all seem to be achieving while they're out there is pretty amazing, isn't it?
As the board knows, we really have an outstanding process from the beginning with our officers, so because of the process that's been set up a while ago, we've really got a great prop to pick from. Every time we run an examination, we'll really pick it from the best of the best, so...
Yeah, seems so.
Definitely. You can see the results.
Yeah. We certainly can. All right. Very good. Item two, citizens' time. I know you're not here for citizens' time, Amy, but anybody online here for citizens' time? Not seeing anyone? Lynn? No? Paul?
No.
Anybody out there?
Still early in the year, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, right. Yeah, 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 right, yeah. There's snow out there, too.
Yeah.
All right. Item three. Item three is a public hearing. We're going to open the public hearing. The notice has been available on the town website and in, as well as various media outlets around town and posted accordingly, the timeframe. I would entertain a motion from the board to waive the reading of the public notice and open the public hearing.
Second.
Excuse me. Move by Joe. Second by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, zero. Actually, the public hearing is... Town Clerk is here to set the town election for April twenty twenty-four to discuss voting by mail and early voting. Amy Warfield, you have the floor.
Thank you. Yes. As you all are probably aware, in Massachusetts, we now have three different ways that people can vote. One is vote by mail, where the ballots are sent out to people at their request. The second is with early in-person with no excuse, which replaced absentee vote, a good deal of absentee voting. And then the third is traditionally showing up in person. For all three state elections this year, that is mandated by the Secretary of State's office. But for the town election, the Board of Selectmen, based on a recommendation from the Board of Registars, needs to decide that we will opt into early in-person voting and that we will not opt out of vote by mail. So the vote that you all need to take, and the Board of Registars did meet this afternoon and recommended four-zero that we do both early voting in-person and vote by mail. And so the vote that you all need to take tonight is to agree with the recommendation from the Board of Registars and say that we will have early voting in-person and we will have vote by mail for the town election.
Okay. Very good. Mike, let me start on that, and any questions for Town Clerk?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Amy, just a quick question for my curiosity's sake.
Sure.
So we have three ways to vote. Last town election, what were the percentages, like between early in-person, by mail, and voting in-person on election day?
Okay. It was about forty percent were in-person the day of. The sixty percent was divided with about twenty to twenty-five percent early in-person, and the rest were vote by mail.
Okay. Interesting. Thank you, Amy. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you. Joe, any questions?
No. Who might argue with the board registers?
Well, thank you.
Mr. Priest?
I have no questions.
Me neither.
And I guess, Amy, the only question I have, having these variety of options now, has our numbers gone up at all in terms of turnout? It still remains?
It remains pretty much about the thirteen, fifteen percent for a town election. State primaries, we run about forty-five to fifty percent. And presidential elections for the past three presidential, or two presidential elections, this will be the third one, that we've had either option, we still run about eighty-seven percent. So it has not affected the voter turnout in Burlington at all.
I'd say interesting, interesting. I thought it would make it a little bit easier for folks, no more excuses for not going out there casting a ballot. I think that's unfortunate, but hopefully we'll continue to work on that, and hopefully we'll see those numbers go up.
Yeah.
Is there anybody in the audience or online who has any questions, concerns regarding this agenda item? I'm seeing none.
I'll make a motion for a public hearing.
Second by Joe.
Second.
Second by Nick. All in favor?
Aye.
Right there is Joe. Okay. Public portion is closed. Anything further from the board? Michael?
I do have a fault, actually, Mr. Chairman. I get this question asked all the time, and you've given me the answer, but I forget because I'm forgetful.
No problem.
People say, why can't we combine? We have three elections this year in town, right? Why can't we combine the local election with one of the primary elections or the presidential? And I know you've given me a sound reasonable answer, and I forget it, so I'd like to hear it again.
No problem. And if I could also kind of give... I'll answer the question, and then I have another little plug about the presidential primary. One of the problems that we run into, or one of the situations, is because the March primary is a primary, for us to run the town election on that same date would basically require us to run two separate elections at the same time in the same location, which would mean everybody would have to check in two times. They would get two ballots, and then they would process those two ballots. So that's one of the confusions that it does cause. Towns that do do it, because there are some towns in Massachusetts that do have it as part of their bylaws, that when the presidential primary is a month from the town election, that they would combine them. There is no cost savings, because you have to do everything separately because it's a primary, because there's three ballots on that election that don't match the town election. The other thing is, by state law, towns are required to have their municipal elections in the spring. So we can't run them with the presidential election because the presidential elections are in November. One of the other layers of complexity that we have, because we have representative town meeting, is that our town election is already seven different ballots, one for each precinct. So again, combining that with any other election just lays out a level of complexity. So... But I hope that answers it.
No, perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
One thing I do want to point out is that in the next week here, in relationship to the presidential primary, the Secretary of State's office will be mailing out the postcards for the vote-by-mail ballots, okay? And so everyone who is a registered voter will get one of those cards. They can make the determination as to whether they want to vote for all elections in the year as vote by mail, or pick and choose from the list all of the available elections for the year. The primary is March fifth, and early voting, or early, I mean, registration, end-of-registration date is going to be February twenty-fourth, and early in-person voting will start on the twenty-fourth as well. We will be doing the early in-person out of the town clerk's office. We've found that we can usually handle that for a primary or the town election that way. Just to give you some details about the upcoming election.
Very good. Very good. Anything else? Amy, let me ask you this. You want two separate votes on this, or you collectively sign?
No, just... Just, yeah. The major vote that we need is that you're going to opt to do those two formats together and continue them for the town election.
Okay. And unrelated to this agenda item, I recently received a census.
Yes.
At the conclusion of this item, can you take a minute, tell the folks at home, like the listeners, why it's important they fill out their census and get it back to you in a timely manner?
Surely. Yes. One of the ways that we keep our voter lists, and Massachusetts really leads with our voter lists being very clean and up to date, is that we do run an annual census, which if people return that census form with accurate information, we can update our information. It is also the place where we... It helps us to be able to clean out people who have moved out of town or no longer live at that address and move them to the proper address. So that should be returned as quickly as possible, and we greatly appreciate it. We currently have gotten in about ten percent of them back already, so that's what's been processed.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Okay. Without any further ado, is there a motion to approve the Board of Registars' recommendation for in-person and voting by mail for the upcoming election?
So moved.
Second by Jim. Second by... Nick, anything further on this item? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, zero.
There is one last thing, Mr. Chair, that I... If I can just put it in.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you so much. That is, I do need to just have one more vote from you all in regards to police coverage for elections. Part of the Voting Act of 2022 was that the selectmen are supposed to charge the chief of police or his designee with appointing officers for details for the day of the election. Now, this is a process that I've handled myself for thirteen years now, previous to me, but now you guys just have to basically give me permission to be able to talk to the police chief about having police detail at the elections for 2024.
So that's not a specific agenda item, Paul?
Yeah, should we bring that one back?
We can bring that back, yes. That'd be fine. I'm sorry. I thought I had included it in, but...
It's in the backup, but not necessarily part of the public hearing.
Okay. It doesn't have to be part of the public hearing. It's not a public hearing. It's just a vote by you guys, but I'll bring it back next time.
Yes.
No problem.
I think that would be best.
Yeah.
Thanks, Amy.
Be glad to.
All right. Won't be an issue.
Okay. Thank you so much.
All right. Happy New Year.
Yes.
All righty. Item five, discussion and approval, January twenty-four, twenty-four town meeting. John has provided us with a list of warming articles he's highlighted.
Mike, you missed one.
Did I miss one? I'm so sorry. Did I miss? Oh! Barbara, how could I forget? Sorry. I'm so sorry. I look for approval, Town Common fundraiser temporary pig sculpture is due through September first. Barbara LaRue. My apologies.
I attempt to share my screen. It working? There, it's working. Thank you. So my name is Barbara LaRue. I am the current chair of the Burlington Sculpture Park, and I'm here today to talk to you about our 2024 proposal for fundraising. So just a very quick background. The Sculpture Park opened in 2020. We had six sculptures at that time, one on the common, the big dog, and five in the park. Our second installation was in 2022, and that's what's out there now. We now own five of the sculptures, and there are another five out there that we are currently leasing. Those will go away in summer of 2024, unless we buy some, but that may not happen. Our next installation will be summer of 2024. Over the last three and a half years, we have had a number of events at the park, most of them family-oriented, but some also history or cultural, and they've been very well-received. Our last event drew a crowd of over two-hundred-and-fifty people. It was very successful, and in general, people have really embraced the park, and they enjoy it. Our funding history is pretty simple. We had an initial investment by Norblum Company of $10,000, and that got us started off. Since then, we've been very lucky to have the support of a lot of other businesses in town that I've listed there for you. And also in 2022, Town Meeting allocated $20,000 to the park, part of which was used to purchase the red statue that's on the common right now next to the dog. But we don't really want to come back to the town looking for more money. We really would prefer to try to run the park on donations, and with that in mind, we have come up with a plan for 2024. But we want the fundraiser to be more than just a fundraising event. Of course, the money is important, but we want to get more out of it than just money. We want this to celebrate Burlington's history. It is Burlington's 225th birthday this year, and we would really like to come up with something that respects and honors that. We also want this fundraiser to inspire and engage the community. We want it to be something that draws people out and throughout the summer so that they can engage with the park and engage with our beautiful Town Common space. We also are hoping that this fundraiser could bring together our business and residential communities. We have done some of that already. We have had wonderful partnerships with Wegmans and with Rosa Mexicano, when people who came to the park actually engaged with some of the businesses that were supporting the park, and that was great. But Burlington has so many wonderful businesses in town, not just restaurants, that do very interesting progressive work, and we'd like to find a way for the park to bring together the residents and some of those businesses so they can learn about the very exciting, interesting work that's being done here. And lastly, we want this fundraiser to help prepare the town for the next step in the Sculpture Park's life, because as we all know, we're going to be needing to relocate soon because of the new police station. So those are the goals with this fundraiser. Now, you've all probably heard of Cow Parade before. There was one on Boston Common this summer. Lots of big cows that were painted brightly and very exciting and fun for people to interact with, and that is a fundraiser that's happened. Those types of fundraisers happen throughout the country. I know there was one in Pittsburgh that had dinosaurs. There were lots of cows. So with that in mind, we started thinking about what we could do in Burlington. But Burlington doesn't really have any particular affinity for cows. We have no relationship with cows. We have relationships with pigs, because in 1799, the major agricultural industry in Burlington was pig farming. So we are proposing pigs on the common. We would like to purchase somewhere between ten and fifteen life-size pigs, and I'm talking about the big pigs, not those little ones, big pigs, that we would then bring to area businesses, ask them to sponsor a pig. They would... We would work with them to help them find artists and design the pigs, probably something that relates to their business. And we'd like to have the pigs installed in the common for the summer. Hopefully, June, July, August, we're flexible on dates, but probably have them leave before Labor Day. The exact locations for the pigs, I'm not presenting to you tonight, because that's something that I think we need to figure out along with DPW and recreation. We want the locations of the pigs to be where people can see them and interact with them and enjoy them, but we also have to make sure they're not too difficult for recreation to mow around and for DPW to install. So I'm not proposing exact locations, because I think that has to be something that we work out cooperatively among all the departments. And of course, Jim Tigges, who is our representative from your board on the Sculpture Park Committee, will be reporting back to you about all our progress. After the exhibit is over, the pigs go home. They go back to the businesses that sponsored them, hopefully to be installed outside on their grounds. And then there can be a map online, and people, visitors, families, can go and visit the pigs all around town. If unfortunately there are some pigs, or one or two pigs, that don't have a home, the Sculpture Park would adopt that pig and give it a home in the park. So that's the plan. So what this fundraiser will do is all the things that we mentioned in the goals slide. It honors our agricultural history. It provides opportunities for residents to learn about some of the cool businesses that are here in Burlington, and it creates a fun, engaging activity that will last all summer long and hopefully into the future as well. And it will allow us to test out future locations for sculptures. Once the police station construction starts, we'll be moving, and this will give us a chance to sort of introduce the concept to the town that the Sculpture Park might not be in that little pocket anymore. It might actually be elsewhere in town on the common or along in this, in our area there near the common. So I'm here tonight to ask for your permission to proceed with this. I can't go out and sell this idea if I can't install the pigs on the common. So I'm asking for your permission to proceed and to install pigs on the common with the understanding that I would work with the other departments to make sure that the locations work for them, and I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Barbara. And I apologize again for not recognizing you.
Oh, that's okay.
Having a... Getting off to a bad start in 2024 here. Jim, that's your subcommittee. Why don't you start over there?
Since I was come on to the Sculpture Park Committee, I didn't realize the life that it had, and by seeing the events grow, literally hundreds of people in two hours come by, I am totally, extremely impressed by how many people really like it. You can see, you'll drive by and see people taking pictures with the sculptures, and I think as we, at our committee meeting, this is a way of bringing all of this together for the town, for our back... I mean, my family bought a house on Reed Hamark's old pigyard farm to bring everything together. They're colorful. I think it's... To me, this is an awesome idea. I hope... I mean, I was hoping to get more than fifteen, but we've got to remember...
If we can get more than fifteen businesses to buy them, we will buy more than fifteen pigs.
It was just kind of creative way to acknowledge the 225th anniversary of a town that was built on piggeries and an agency that, I mean, an entity of a town that is using this to raise money so that it doesn't have to go to the town. I mean, I think Marandy's Barbershop Pig will look fantastic. No, I just think it's a great idea. I just think it's...
We can have a pig with hair.
It's a test drive for the new... If we have to relocate some of the sculptures, I just can't see how we could say no to something like this. I just think it's awesome.
All right, great. Thank you, Jim. Nick, thoughts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah. Thoughts and questions? Let's call it piggery, but I do enjoy the word.
Is that a word, piggery?
I have no idea. I just... I think we all just innately enjoyed it. A lot of puns to be had around pigs, which I think... A lot, a lot of puns to be had around pigs, which I think makes everyone smile. But to, but to further to his point, on a serious note, I think that like over the last four years, we've seen this growth in the community. And I think that's why consistency in new things is important, right? Like, it was a handful of people who came together to, to create the Sculpture Park, right? And a handful of people turned out and supported it. And over the last four years, we've seen it grow so that events are upwards of 250 people. That's fantastic, right? That's, that's nearly a quarter of what we get for a voter turnout. So, I mean, you know, if, if that's the, the metric that we're gauging things on, then that's success.
Maybe we need free food at the polls.
Maybe we do, maybe we do. Maybe we need some, some bacon at the polls. So just to, just to turn to some questions and thoughts. So first off, my only level of hesitancy is around putting like the, the parameters of how the pigs will be painted and designed, right? I can see businesses going, yeah, slap, slap a logo on that pig, literally, and go ahead and drop it out there. And I don't want to see logos on town property, right? I think using creative colors, brand colors, a barbershop pole, right? I think, yeah, a red, blue, and white pig would be awesome, you know? I think those kinds of things are great. And then online and in documentation, you know, you could have the pigs numbered or assigned or whatever it is, but like no, no logos, I think is my biggest, you know, piece of like natural feedback. Otherwise, though, I, I fully support the idea. I assume the pigs will be safe if a kid tries to climb on it.
Yes, they're not very high, although they're a little slippery. They are, they are heavy, so I think you could place your child on the pigs safely. But to answer your other question, the companies that purchase the pills, pigs will be required to submit their design to the committee.
Great.
So it will be reviewed. I don't expect that there are going to be problems, but we also are not looking for logos. Each pig will have a sign about, you know, what the business is that sponsored it. And I'm sure there'll be themes, you know, so I can picture if there was a Rosa Mexicano pig, it's probably going to have the bright colorful look of one, like the, the mural that they have in their restaurant, something like that. But I would not expect it to just be Rosa Mexicano, you know, like on the side of the pig.
Excellent, okay. And then I guess my other question is like, what's the, do you have like a set dollar amount goal that you're trying to achieve? I mean, I want to blow the, blow the pig off, the, the hair off the pig here.
Throughout the whole program, we would like to raise at least $10,000 because that would fund our next installation and have a little bit left over to perhaps purchase one of the existing pieces. But with, it's really hard to say because I haven't had a chance to go out. I have talked to a couple of local businesses and received some very positive feedback and also received feedback about what I need to bring to them to make it attractive for them. And that's why I'm asking to stay for the summer because part of what makes it attractive to businesses is being able to tell them about the numbers of people that will be on the common for Burlington, celebrate Burlington Day, for the movies, for the concerts that are on the common throughout the summer. That's what makes it work for the businesses.
Right, okay. And then just a, just a thought, I mean, you know, you mentioned a couple of times that you're, you're looking to try to bring residents and businesses closer together. As somebody who lives on a, on a busier street, I mean, it, it might feel weird to say, but I'd take a pig in my front yard. I mean, you know, look, like say it goes well, and you've got 15, 20 pigs, right? Like, that's, that's the ideal.
Be great.
I, I don't see 20 pigs fitting on the common and, you know, us having room for other things too over the summer with all the events. But like there, there have to be other prominent places in town that we could put them.
Right in front of this building would be great.
Right, exactly. I'm just, I'm just tossing out there that there are probably other residents who would like, I wouldn't mind a pig in my front yard if it means supporting the enthusiasm of the Sculpture Park. And, you know, maybe we'll have a home for it. So just something to consider, I don't know, it's a thought.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Hey, great, good, good questions, Nick. Joe?
I'm thinking about how much this.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna.
We can talk after the meeting, Joe.
Well, first of all, we don't, we don't know what the pigs are going to cost yet, right? From, from your standpoint, do you have any idea what each pig is going to cost? Or is it a complete donation for, I'm, I'm in favor of it, so don't, just ask me questions outside my head.
Yes, I'm trying to decide if I should reveal my cost structure publicly or perhaps I could talk to you about it after.
Okay.
Well, they'd be sold for. Can you reveal that?
What's that?
What you would charge the business.
I'm not sure, but I'm, I could ballpark it at 2,500, but that would include the cost that the person's paying for the painting.
Like outside the box is taken, the schools in town. If the schools were allowed to paint the pig.
I actually spoke with.
Elementary school is allowed to paint their own pig and give them the history of how this town was originated by pig farmers and stuff like that.
That's a great idea.
And it brings up, it brings up the fact that now we're teaching these younger kids on how it all started and why the pigs were on the common and how it goes on from there. I mean, that's just my thought. Let the schools paint their pigs, whatever.
Right.
Odd class decides.
I don't know if the schools could afford to buy it.
Yeah, I know, that's why, that's why, there goes my first question.
But one thing, we did talk with George Rakowitz is on our, is on the committee as well. And one of the things we did speak with George about is that perhaps some of the businesses in town, especially if they didn't want to hire a very expensive artist, could hire some of the high school, the advanced placement high school students who are artists to do the painting on the pigs, to actually do the design and create the pigs for some of the businesses, which would be great. If we are wildly successful and we sell a whole lot of pigs, maybe we would have enough money to have one pig that we could just not make any money on and give to the schools. But I don't know if we'd be able to do one for every elementary school.
I don't, I don't know. It was just, like I said, I was just thinking outside.
It's a great idea.
And then, you know, even if, even if you were to go to the schools and ask them, listen, can we have a small fundraiser to have the school adopt the pig? And let the kids donate some, you know, the parents 10 bucks a piece. You can come up with $2,500 in a heartbeat.
Right.
If parents decide to do it, you know what I mean? And then that school will, will have their, their pig.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just thinking outside the box, but I'm in favor of it.
I love the idea, yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Joe. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Nick speaks only, not for the whole street, just, we live on the same street, just his house. I, I love the idea. I think anything we can do, Sculpture Park's a great thing to keep this sculpture park sustainable and have money that you guys can use to purchase new sculptures and everything that goes into running and maintaining the park. My only problem, and it's just a minor, it's a me thing, as I mentioned to you, I'm not really keen on the idea of pigs. I'm not really inspired or engaged by any pigs in the history of humankind. Maybe Babe the Pig or Porky Pig or the Pig in Charlotte's Web or Bacon. But other than that, there aren't many pigs in the course of history that really move the needle. That said, I understand it, I think it's great. I was trying to think with that concern, I was trying to think of other things that maybe we could pivot. Like, I don't think a coyote would fly. Had a lot of talk about that recently.
I think you need to embrace Burlington's piggy past.
Yeah, yeah. And, or like, we used to be a brewing community, so I didn't think that kegs all over town. Yeah, we were way back in the day. I don't think kegs all over town would work, so I think we've got to go with the pigs. No, I think it's a great idea. Back to Nick's point about the logos, my only concern there is if, if I were spending authority for a company, I would want like to slap my logo on there or show people. But I guess if they do have to sign, then it would be covered.
They'll have to sign, and I think that people will get very creative to make the pig represent their company without it just having their name on it.
Yeah. And will you require them to put like a 225 maybe on the rump or something for, to kind of?
225th birthday.
Yeah, just, you know, make a, so just to.
Either that or we could put it on the signs. I do think we should do that.
No.
Because we want to connect it with the birthday.
No, I think it's cool, great idea, I'm in support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thanks, Mike.
It's true, I have a follow-up whenever you're done.
Okay, good, give me one second because I, I sort of echo a lot of the comments I'm hearing from the board here. I, I think the community overwhelmingly has been supportive of efforts of the Sculpture Park. I certainly surpassed my expectations, and I hear very, very little complaints regarding it. And I kind of like this idea with the pigs. But I also agree with these two gentlemen that very, we've really got to be careful with how they're painted. You know how this, we've got a long history here in Burlington, a certain segment of our population, when they hear signs, they, anything different is unacceptable. And I, you know, I don't want it to come back here to us that said, hey, you guys approved you know, these signs that are going to be either on or near these sculptures for three months. I just think it could be, could come back to cause us a little bit of aggravation. So I just want to be extra, extra careful how we.
Well, Jim is on the committee, so Jim will be, like I said, the designs will have to be submitted to the committee for approval. Jim is on the committee. If you'd like to appoint another member to sit on the committee for this review process, I'd be more than happy to welcome any one of you.
You know, some of our guys here have experience with the Board of Appeals. In addition to Jim, I mean, just, maybe just as an additional set of eyes and ears for during the review process, I don't know if anybody's, either of you two fellows are interested. But you're already interested in the barber thing anyway, so.
This is a lot more than that for us. Well, I think, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Sure.
I think out of the, out of the gate, like just as a, a point of entry to say, you know, no logos and no full words, right? But like, say Rosa Mexicano wanted to do like a, an R as a part of the overall pig. I don't see an issue with that.
I, I don't, I, I'm, company logo would have been fine if you asked me, but I'm not, I don't make the role there, but.
If you would like to appoint another member so that we have two members of select board on that reviewing committee, we're fine with that.
If somebody wants to volunteer, they're, they're welcome to do that.
Yes, sir.
So my, my thought process is that is they've done a great job with the Sculpture Park. Jimmy's on there now. They, they know what we're looking for as far as what we want. Jim sits on the board himself. So I think that, you know, leaving it up to them to make their decision on what, what would be there. They know we're not looking for a complete logo of, you know, Morandi's Barbershop or whatever it's going to be or, you know. I think we should just let them do their thing. They've done a great job so far. I don't know if they have to come back to us to go over this again.
I kind of liken it to when, Joe, when you used to be involved with the Christmas trees out there in the common, didn't, didn't certain businesses or donors were able to put a little cardboard sign or something with the twenty year.
They had an eight by, eight by, I forget what it was now, it was a long time ago. But yeah, but there was no logos, no actual logos. It was, it could say the business, but it couldn't say like if they had a, if they, they had a Mexican hat for their logo, they couldn't have. It was just that it was, we liked to sponsor, thank, sponsored by, you know, Morandi's Barbershop or Sammy's Deli, whatever. There was no colorful type of logo on the sign.
Are you going to start, what do you think?
Yeah, I was just going to ask Barbara. Barbara, can we just make sure it sounds like they're heavy? And I'm not sure how they're affixed to the ground. So if we could just, you know, we have the ability to help with public works and whatnot, but you know how we have to schedule in advance like we always do on, on some of the sculptures? So the sooner we can start thinking about that, that would be helpful for the department planning that out, whether we need concrete pads or I'm not exactly sure how they are moved around.
The ones that I'm looking at have little metal things attached to their feet, and then there's a spike that's driven into the ground, and they're pretty heavy. So yes, could they be stolen? Yes, they could, but almost anything can if two people really are trying hard. But they wouldn't be easy to steal. I have a meeting tomorrow set up already with some folks from Recreation in the hopes that you said yes tonight so that I could talk with them about placement and what would work best for them when it comes to mowing and things like that.
Are they, in terms of weight, are they need to be moved by people or?
Oh, they can be moved by people. They're, each one is about 60 pounds.
Okay.
So I think two men can probably move a pig quite easily, but, you know, then we'll, we'll secure them into the ground so they won't be as easy to take away.
I wasn't sure if they needed to be equipped.
No, you won't need a crane or anything like that.
Okay.
Yeah, I can't lift it, maybe you can.
Probably not. Thank you.
Any concerns regarding the sign, logo, or anything like that?
I mean, it's, it's, it's more of, from my standpoint, it's something that's a little bit non-traditional, but I think it's, you know, I think it's an interesting idea as well, and I think it's worth a try. And like I say, the thing that I think most closely replicates it was, was the Christmas trees that used to be on the common as, as a fundraiser, as you previously indicated. And if I remember at that time sort of what the controversy was, there may have been a Christmas tree that was sponsored by a local politician. Some people took it as a political sign on the common as opposed to a sponsorship sign. So I think that may have been the greatest challenge at that time or the greatest complaint. But certainly in working with Melissa, we understand that murals can be signs too. So we probably just want to check with our, our building commissioner too, just to make sure that.
Yes, I will do that. And although no one asked the question, as part of our call to artists for the sculptures, we always say we don't want anything political, and we will say that in this case too. We do not want any political messages, and everything has to be family friendly.
Jimmy, you had a follow-up?
Yeah, just a couple of things regarding the business logos and whatnot. Those might potentially violate bylaws, so it has, they have to comply with the bylaws because it might be interpreted, misinterpreted as a sign. So they're going to have to comply with that. So that'll not eliminate, but it'll address a lot of the issues with logos and business names. Regarding the schools, maybe not the schools themselves, but the PTOs.
Yes, PTOs would be great.
And for the record, piggeries is a word, so.
Thanks for clearing that up.
Formed by Assistant Town Administrator Denizio.
That's what we called them.
I'll have to get that checked. I will not accept that. I'll need verification, I guess.
All right. Anything, anything further? All right, Bing, now entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the request of the Sculpture Park Committee for use of the common during those three months.
Second.
Okay, move, been second, anything further? Bing, now, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, zero.
Great, thank you so much.
There you go, Barbara.
Thanks, Barbara.
Happy New Year.
We'll keep you updated. Thank you, happy new year.
That's all, folks.
Thank you.
Hi, Barbara, thank you.
No, I just want to clarify, we, we requested June 15th to September 1st. Are we doing June, July, and August, not September, June 15th to September 1st? I just want clarification for.
I was presuming that was the, to a class, is that right?
We just said June, July, and August, but here it said 15th, September 1st. I just want clarification.
As written.
I am willing to do what you guys want me to do. I don't think I'd be able to get them installed before June 15th.
Yeah, I'll make a motion we make that from June 1st to September 15th.
And if I can't get them in by June 1st, that's okay? Just no, we can't go outside that window, is that fair?
You can't put them in before.
Right, right. But I could put them in after as long as they're gone by September 1st.
September 1st?
That's what you listed, yes.
All right, September 1st.
Okay.
Agreed, gentlemen? Agreed to this? Okay, very good.
Aye.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I was talking piggeries, got us confused with the pigs.
Okay, now we can get to our agenda. Item five, and I was about to say that John provided us a list of former articles. He highlighted the ones that he thought we, we might like to vote on ahead of Town Meeting. We've already approved it, the list for topic, right?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that the first item, though, there were some changes. We, there were some that were pulled off from the draft that you approved, and there was one that was added on. So if we just have that vote first, and then we could go through those for you to actually take a position on with Mr. Denizio after that.
Okay, which was, which is the one we added for?
So we added number six, which is use table modernization. And there were two articles either on there that were pulled off in advance, and that was a wireless bylaw substitution and middle housing definition. So those are both pulled off.
So we don't need to vote them off, right?
No, I've just, I would ask that, vote the new list as provided in the backup. That should, that should.
Okay, and then we can circle back and go over these highlighted ones, but you got it?
Mr. Chairman, I make, make a motion that we approve the list, the index of articles that's presented tonight.
The revised list of articles, yeah?
I'll second that.
Second, anything further on that? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, zero. Okay. Now, John's highlighted half a dozen or so for us. If there is other ones on here you guys want to talk about, we can do that after we go over the ones that John, that John has highlighted for us, okay? Mr. Denizio, the floor is yours.
Okay, would you, would you like me to run through all of them and then go them all together? Or are you going to do one by one and then take it away?
How, how would you like to do it?
I would say if we have any questions on it, we'll go one by one. I would say if we have any questions on it, we'll go one by one. If we have any questions, then we'll just answer the questions and then vote on it.
Okay.
Gotta do that.
The first one, Mr. Chairman, is Article eight. It's an annual article that's done traditionally at the January town meeting. At our May, at our May town meeting, we approve a reserve fund for ways and means committed to use or anything that comes up, any issues that come up in someone's budget. We approve it for $200,000 traditionally in January. We come and ask for another $100,000 plus anything that's been spent to get the balance up to $300,000. The reason we do it in January is wait till free cash has been certified. And this article is the same, proceed each January.
Questions on this one, anybody? Okay.
The chairman, number, Article nine is a transfer from free cash to water, water stabilization. Again, this is an annual article that we do in January. You actually hear this twice at two different town meetings. One is to move money from free cash into the stabilization fund that's done in January. And the reason they do that is because during the fiscal year, the receipts from our increase in our water rates that we have dedicated to pay for the MMVRA connection are close to free cash, and then we transfer them from free cash into the stabilization funds as the, as we start incurring those costs. Then at our May town meeting, we ask to transfer the money out of the stabilization fund and use it to offset our budget depending on how much we need. So this transfer is for just over 1.4 million dollars, again, in annual January town meeting.
Questions? Okay, John, next.
The next one is new. You may have heard about this. This has been being talked about for the last few years. There was a settlement between the manufacturers of opioid drugs in the state of Mass. Each town that participated in this settlement, this class action suit, Burlington was one of them, was awarded a specific amount of money to be paid over whatever years. There's a, there's a memo in your backup that spells out how much it is and, and how much Burlington will get. So not that they're in the lead, Burlington will get about $600,000 over that period, over a fifteen, twenty-year period of time. The reason we have to come to you for this warrant article is because all receipts for a town are considered general fund receipts unless there's legislation that allows you to not put it in the general fund, in air market for a special purpose. That legislation has been passed, but not until this December. So we're here asking for the money that was received last fiscal year, which was the first year that these settlement funds were distributed to towns. However, the state didn't get around to changing the law to allow for this. They have now, so we only have to do this once. We'll be transferring 135,000 from free cash into a opioid settlement, a special revenue account that we will create. And then going forward, as we continue to get that money, it will go directly into that special revenue account and will be used with those purposes that are allowable per the settlement, which is to fight against, in the memo, it tells you exactly what you can use it for. We have a committee in town that consists of the folks from fires, folks from police, youth and family services, school department, that, that will come to the select board and make a request on how to use some of those.
I see, I see, very good.
So this is the first time we're, we're talking about it, what we're gonna, or this is the first time we're required to ask for the request to set up that fund.
I don't think it was, I don't, you kept referencing that it was included in the backup. I don't think, I don't think we actually got that. Could you, I just ask you to send it out to us?
Yeah.
Any mail tomorrow or something?
We'll do it.
Okay, that's interesting, yeah, interesting. Any, any question anymore on this one? John will send out that, that backup for you guys to review, and we'll be.
Next one, Mr. Chairman, is an annual one. It's labeled as transportation infrastructure fund, which, which always confuses people. But this is the money that we get from our portion of the rideshare fee that is added on to each Uber or Lyft ride that starts or ends in Burlington. There's a twenty, a twenty cent fee that the state keeps half and the towns get half. We're getting just under $25,000 this year for our, for our rides. This would've been for calendar twenty-two. So we would hear about this amount in July, and then we have to appropriate it at our next town meeting where free cash is eligible. So, so this is actually not a free cash transfer, but it's an authorization to spend those $24,800 on our local rideshare program. So we use this money to offset, offset our local Lyft program that's run through the COA. It, it can't be used for other things, you know, other mobility-type things. But for the last few years, while that program is trying to find its feet, we're earmarking the money for that.
Questions?
Just one quick question.
Yeah.
The dollar amount of this has grown since the rideshare started, right?
Well, it went, the, the dog, this piece that we're getting, it plummeted with COVID.
Yeah.
And it's climbed back up. Is that technically, we don't have to go through the appropriation process if you're less than $25,000? But we're gonna be over $25,000, and we have been doing it every year. So that law was just put into place, but we thought, no, don't just stop it for one year and then come back next year and have to explain why we haven't done it.
Sure. Anything further? Okay, next article, John?
That's it for financial, but the two general articles. The first one is for a waiver of the maximum age restriction for a firefighter. So we have a Burlington resident who is on the firefighter list, was under the age limit when he took the test. Is, or is over the age limit now. So the way the process works is the town meeting has to approve, to request a waiver, waiver from the legislature for them to waive the maximum age, which is thirty-two.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Just how, how old is this gentleman?
Thirty-two.
Are we gonna cap this at a, at a number when, you know, you're not gonna let this, is it sixty-five or?
It's only one, it's for a specific person. When you get the waiver, it's for that person.
Good for the next twenty years, or is it, is it good for, are we gonna put a time limit on it, or, I mean?
Uh, oh, I'll have to find out, but I think the idea is we're, we're getting the waivers.
Do we intend to put him on the job in the, you know, in the next twelve, twenty-four months or something, or? I mean, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed, you know, you're, you're gonna be a cutoff at some point. You can't not have a cutoff aged to.
Mr. Chairman, Eric, these are a case-by-case basis. We've done this in the past. So if someone sixty-five came before us, we'd have the right to say no.
Yeah, is this waiver just for this particular gentleman?
Just for this person, and they've met all the other requirements except for the age. So the waiver would be just for this one person for this one time.
Until when?
Right, I think what, what.
Is it good for, is it good for the twenty years? I mean, or is he, do we, do we, do we anticipate this guy coming on the job in the next twelve or twelve or twenty-four months?
I think the idea is that they pass all the other requirements and they intend to, if this passes.
All right, then, then, then why wouldn't we save this? And we would, you know, we'd be, we'd approve this article not to exceed age thirty-five or something like that.
We can run that by town council to see what, what exactly needs to be, so the article's written.
To make a recommendation that's something to that effect, basically, if you're saying.
Yeah, there would be, yeah. I mean, I don't want it to be infinity, I don't want it to be indefinite, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I.
I mean, if we did it for this guy, we'd have to do it for everybody that could.
Mr. Chairman, I would say that the board will have the ultimate authority on that anyway, given that you have to, still have to appoint the person to the department in the future.
Actually, your appointment.
Well, like I say, it has to be approved by you, so. I think we understand what the message is sent.
I get it, okay.
Ten years from now, this shouldn't apply to anybody at that age. But we're this unique circumstance where the person had taken the test and placed on the exam.
You know, I'm, I'm fine with, I'm fine with that. And, and we all know that we're having some, some difficulties filling some of these positions anyway, so.
Yep, I think the intention would be to hire this person and get them to the process and get them, get them on the job as soon as possible.
Okay, well, I will, which are any objections I have, if you guys comfortable with that? All right, anything for, oh, South Bedford Street.
So the last one is warrant articles through, to approve the sale order. To, we're asking Tommy for the authorization to, for the select board to sell 119 South Bedford now that it's been rehabbed and ready for sale. It would still, we would still have to go through the whole process, the whole lottery process, and it would have to come back to the board for, for final approval. But the first step in that is for us to have town meeting approve that. So for anybody that has forgotten, 119 South Bedford is one of the old military houses that's deed restricted, that came up for sale in 2022. In the May twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two town meeting, approved the money for the town to purchase the property. That money was taken from the affordable housing account. Now, the, the property was rehabbed, basically got ran out. It looks great, I've been in it, and now it's ready for us to sell again. And the proceeds from that sale would go back into the affordable housing account. We've done this before for, what, seventy, is that better?
Questions? No? Oh, they're letting them off, they're letting them off easy tonight.
The only thing that's not on there is the firefighter, where everything else is just a regular.
Yeah, yeah, most of us, stuff we've revisited before. Anything else you guys see, anything that catches your eye you wanna talk about? Or have John explain more, a little more in-depth to us? No, you all said? All right, then, then entertain a motion to approve the, oh, we did that, we did the articles. So the one, two, three, one, two, three, four, five, six, six articles that John's looking for support from us.
So I'll approve this, everything but number thirteen on the general articles, because you're gonna abstain from that, right?
No, 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 I, I withdrew my, my concerns, I withdrew my objections. The rest of the, everyone else seems to be okay with, they don't seem to be a problem.
So I'll make a motion to approve the financial articles eight through eleven and the general articles thirteen and fourteen.
Your second?
Second.
Motion by, Joe's second, but I think Jim was first, I, voice I heard. Anything further? Being done, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, zero. All right, sir. The item, item six, a couple of licenses left over from our last session. One was an in holder, and the other was a class two. What was the, I forget, who held the inkeeper's license? Did you, Jim?
I did, yeah.
Who have concerns with that?
One thirty, Middlesex Turnpike, yes.
It hasn't submitted their paperwork. It has been submitted since. That's why they weren't on the original list. Same with Burlington Truck. They have submitted their paperwork as well.
Everybody's compliant, everybody's happy? Ben is happy?
Yep.
Steph is happy? All right, Jim, you okay with that?
I'm fine with it, yeah. I was just, the only, my only question was why wouldn't it work on the list, that's, that's all.
Okay, let's take the in holders license first, so that's the simply sweets, Burlington, a motion to approve their in holders license.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, zero. And the other one was a class, late entry into the class-two license market. Any questions, concerns from the board on, on the class-two license? Being done, entertain a motion for that one.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. Anything further, being done, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, zero. All righty, well, glad we got that cleared up. All right, bring this to, they've been doing pretty good last few sessions, not bad, fellas. Subcommittee reports, I'm gonna start on this end with Mr. Tigges.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. November, I, I accidentally forgot November's information in the last meeting, so I'm gonna give November and December's updates from the fire department. In November, the fire department responded to 483 calls. In December, they responded to 501 calls. On one day, it was raining, the rain, wind, storm day we had in December, they had over forty calls in that one day. Most of them were water and power issues. They had a fire, a contained fire at H-Mot in one of the kitchens. Actually, the sprinklers helped them out a lot there, that helped to contain the fire. But they did have a fire, put out a fire in kitchen in H-Mot. They've also responded to a few smoke detectors and CO detectors. So they just wanted to remind residents, check your smoke detectors, check your CO detectors. Weather's cold, people using heaters or fireplace, whatnot, make sure those are up and running. And a couple of it, they, on training, they had four days of Jaws of Life training down at Wind Street Service. They had four days of forced entry training. Twenty-three members completed the fire officer training course over the months. And they also hosted a ropes course. And they ended up covering for Bill Ricker when that tanker rolled over on Route Three that night that caused all the problems. And recently, they responded to a ready, a moving at a, on the ready line to assist with a house fire.
Thank you. Nick? I'll keep it short. You heard it here first, folks, the sixth of April's gonna be our town election. Let's see if we can't get thirteen to fifty percent, a little higher, come out and vote, or, as you heard tonight, in mail or vote early. We are trying to make it as easy as humanly possible for people to vote in their local town election, where I think a lot of us could agree the majority of the action is happening. You know, so if, if you don't have the, the time to get involved, please, you know, make your voice heard through your vote. Next Wednesday, the seventeenth, we're having our first official town expo. Town Clerk Amy Warfield, Nikki Cadillac from the Burlington Buzz, Jim Tigges, and, you know, cursory through email myself, have been working to coordinate this with department directors, Paul, John, the, the whole works. You know, we're, we're trying to do an expo, we're trying to make, you know, how the town works and, you know, what affects you on a day-to-day basis available for you to come and learn. So that's next Wednesday at Grandview, so please come and check it out, and you might learn something. Five to seven?
Yes.
So five to seven PM. I knew what day.
Grandview is at the Council on Agent.
Council on Agent?
Kelly Marlowe.
This is, this is why Jim knows more than I do. I'm just the one talking about. So now that I've given you all the wrong information, go online and look. Good gravy. Lastly, you know, I think, you know, every, every winter I talk about the weather and checking on your neighbors, but the storm this weekend was, was a big one. A lot of downed trees, branches, lines, you know, the roads really rough. I think the, the time that it hit us, Saturday into Sunday, was the best that, you know, possible timing-wise for a storm to hit, where folks can, where folks can be home. But, you know, when, when things like that happen, like, keep an eye on your neighbors. Make sure folks are okay if you see downed lines or, you know, downed trees. You know, make a call, we have a police department, a fire station, you know, that do amazing work like Jim reports on. You know, check in, you know, make sure people are safe. It's really easy to lose power, lose heat, you know, and it's not just our senior citizens we gotta watch out for, it's, it's each other, so.
Correct.
That's, that's my, my, my shtick.
All right, Nick, thank you very much. Mr. Morandi?
Welcome.
Mr. Spayle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Only thing I have is the police station building committee before, just before the holiday, had our second meeting, and we got a quick introduction to the architect, and he, they ran over their first quick initial findings. And it was a very informative meeting and had a long ways to go, but I just wanted to let the board know that we have met the architect.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Michael. And let me also wish you a very happy birthday yesterday.
Thank you.
From our colleague Mike.
Couple of things. I would, I would like to add my voice to the chorus of condolences to Joyce and the entire Fay family that I have heard and read about in the local media and online over the weekend. There's not much that I can add, other than to say he was a remarkable, remarkable man who touched many lives for the good of our community. I recall he once told me that if you are not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. Al was part of the solution in so many ways.
in so many ways, but his greatest satisfaction was bringing smiles to the faces of, faces of our youngest generation and those whose lives were affected at birth with disabilities. He was often referred to as Mr. Burlington. It's a nickname he so rightfully earned. Rest in peace, my friend Al Fay. And finally, tonight, I would like to announce that I will not be a candidate for reelection to the select board this year. It has been a great honor and privilege to represent this wonderful town of Burlington in various positions over the years, but it's time for me to focus on my family and make room for a new generation of leadership. I want to thank all those who have come out and supported me over the years, but most of all, I want to thank my wife Lisa for her patience, support, and some well-timed advice over the years. Thank you, gentlemen. And Mr. Sagarino, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I have for the board tonight is, we all recall the Millionaire's Tax that was passed here in Massachusetts to be allocated back to cities and towns for specific purposes. And we did receive over $400,000 additional dollars to use towards roadway paving under the Chapter 9 program. So our annual allotment is around $1,090,000. So it's about a 40% increase on that. So as you guys know, it's really expensive to do roadways now, and every, every bit will help. So it's nice to, to get some of that funding right back here into the community.
So there was some reporting this morning that the Commonwealth is well below our anticipated revenue for the current year. You had the chance to sort of digest that yet, or was it too early in the process?
Yeah, the state is talking about making cuts to the current year's allotments. I'm not sure if any hard decisions have been made. I did hear a number that they, they need to cut out of the budget. But obviously, I think that that's gonna be a narrative throughout the rest of the year through the budget, that we're gonna have to keep an eye on that. So that's gonna impact our estimates for next year's budget. But the lousy thing about these 9C cuts is that they can adjust funding, which we were already promised for this year. So we'll be keeping a close, close eye on that.
Okay, all righty. John, anything to add, or Lynn, anybody else? All righty. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Second, and all in favor?
Aye.
All right, five, zero, zero. Thank you, everybody.